All right, good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Wednesday, September 30th, 2020 meeting of the Chapakla Central School District Board of Education. The board has been in executive session discussing issues of health and safety, employment of particular persons, and getting advice of council. May I have a motion to reconvene the public session? I'll move. You have a second?
I'll second.
Holly, all in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, thank you. Please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance led by Holly McCall.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the public vote which stands, one nation under God, in the book with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, thank you, Holly. So today, I would like to, once again, and I'll probably say this for as long as school remains in session, but I would like to give a great big thank you to all of our faculties and all of the staff who work for us, counselors, nurses, office workers, our entire custodial staff, our administrators, for doing all the work that allows our schools to remain open. And I would also like to thank our parents and our students, first of all, for their incredible patience with this process. We know it's a very challenging situation, but we are very grateful for your strong partnership in keeping to health and safety protocols and staying informed of all the new updates and, again, being very patient with all of the imperfections that these new challenges bring, such as delays in drop-offs and pickups. So we will keep this up, and we know that at any moment, we may have to pivot, but we are very grateful for all the time that we can spend with in-person schooling. I do want people to bear in mind that the opening of our schools and our kids being in school is not only about academics. We understand that a certain portion of the children who are in school are getting remote instructions to keep them in pods, but healthy child development depends in large part on social interactions with teachers and mentors and peers, and there is important social and emotional work that takes place in schools, which has a large impact on mental health. So it's not only an academic exercise, but it's really to the benefit of the whole child. I would next like to talk about the Town of Newcastle Form-Based Code. There was a listening session last night regarding this new project that the town is engaged in, and there was a discussion regarding the school district input into that, into this new form-based code. If you don't know what I'm referring to, I urge you to go to the Town of Newcastle website and, you know, and read about it. So last night, I think there was an impression that the school district had had the opportunity to give feedback to this code. So I'd just like to clarify, the school district has not yet given feedback or have, we've not had that opportunity. In June, I believe, a couple of board members and the town administrator met with Dr. Christine Ackerman and Jane Shepherdson, who was then our board president, and they were notified of the beginning of the process, of getting an environmental impact statement. And there was no info at that time to base any feedback on. And there was an agreement to meet after the draft generic environmental impact statement had been developed. So that statement is now out. I saw on the town website that the DG EIS was submitted to the town on July 20th. It looks like it was revised on September 23rd, and the town approved it on September 25th. But we were only, we only received it yesterday, on September 29, when a notice to interested parties came to the superintendent's office at around 3:30 PM, which was just a few hours before the listening session last night. So I can talk about, a little bit about the project itself, but I do want to talk a little bit about the timing. Our focus right now is on the pandemic and keeping our schools open. And I'm just concerned about what people's bandwidth is in paying attention to new and huge projects going on around town when we are really, when the school district and the parents themselves are really focused on the health and safety of their kids. So that's one main concern I have with the timing and with the community's ability to fully digest the impacts of the project. But our concern is with our tax base and our enrollment. So I gather that this form-based code would allow the entire commercial district to be developed with five-story buildings. And it looks like we would have 997 new residential apartment units in town, including multifamily units. So the DG EIS indicates that this would produce only 96 new schoolchildren. I don't quite understand how that number was arrived at out of 997 residential apartment units. It seems like a very low number, but nevertheless, 96 is the number that the town board is relying on when deciding on whether or not to adopt the new code. The DG EIS itself mentions that this method of analysis is 10 years old and it's not specific to Newcastle or Westchester County. So that does concern me. But however, this is the number that we're working with. We also need to keep in mind that there are 200 new units coming up with the Conifer Building. We have the Reader's Digest Coppola Building and some new apartments at 91 Bedford Road. So there are a considerable number of apartments coming online in our town. The DG EIS also states that 96 additional children would cost the district approximately $3.3 million. So I'm not quite sure what their methodology is to determine this number, but we do have to consider not only salaries, but an elaborate benefit structure, transportation, special education costs, which are very difficult to estimate, and, you know, the needs of new technology and all of the supplies that children would need. So I would just like to know whether the town is considering the significant increase in taxes in calculating a return on investment. So I guess at the outset, since we received the DG EIS only yesterday, we would need some bit of time to take a look at it and digest it, to have a much better handle on how this would work with our budgeting. But I just want to make it clear for now that the school district was not consulted, and we have not had a chance to analyze the information and weigh in. So I'd just like to give the opportunity to Jane, who did meet last year, last summer with them, and then Warren was part of the listening session last night. So if there's anything you'd like to add that I might have missed?
No, I think that that explains it. I think it was early June, June 4th, we had a Zoom, myself and Christine and John Chow with the town, and we had, you know, spoken with each other that we did want to speak at some point about the Form-Based Code project and its potential impact on the school district. Obviously, we come from a position of being concerned about our tax structure and our school enrollment and how anything in the town would affect that. And we were given sort of a preview of the project and the timeline and went through a PowerPoint. And we knew that the draft generic environmental impact statement was being worked on. The timeline that we had, we knew it was, it was being done in like June and July, and was, as we see now, it was completed then and I guess finalized, dropped sometime in September. And so we all, we had a wonderful conversation about how it could potentially impact us, but we just didn't know that impact yet because that statement wasn't out. And so it was our understanding that we would speak again once that was finished, and that would be forwarded to us. So we just wanted to, you know, make it known that obviously, we do have to look at this and we would like to probably comment on behalf of the board and the district as to how we think this might impact us. But again, we did not have that data until we received it yesterday. So that's, you know, that's what I recall from our meetings.
Okay.
I asked a question during the meeting last night, not as a board president, I said as a board member. And I asked, early in the meeting, they said that they had consulted with a number of different groups, and somebody asked them about school, and they said they had consulted with the school district and the school board. I asked who from the school board. They said Jane, Mrs. Tripp, and Dr. Ackerman. I guess my concern was, I know, I know that Jane had done that, she had sent some notes to us last year on that, but I didn't see that there was any additional detail in there until we saw this yesterday. And I had some, I had some serious concerns about the numbers, especially 997 units with only 96 children. I mean, if we look at historically, New York State or the US government, the average household is 1.97 students per household. And we don't have a full unit of people who own homes and, or rent homes in Chapakla, who use the school district. We have less than 50%. But if you start pulling those numbers back, even if you take very conservative numbers and say 47% of the families would have students in school, if you take a look at maybe 80% of that, because you're saying some, some parents might move here, they don't have children yet, or they're children, or they're empty nesters, or they're not saying that's filling the school in Chapakla, the numbers still come up pretty high. It comes out the way I calculate, 500 students. And I will, I will say this, they said this is going to be a longer, this is not like Conifer or Chapakla Crossing will be online in a year, a year or two. They're saying this is going to be a 15-year ramp up. That said, even if we increase or just create 500 children, that's probably somewhere in the increase of about 25 faculty members to cover that across all three schools. The other thing that concerns me is that it's all based on being in downtown Chapakla, which would be the Grafflin Elementary School and the Bell Middle School. So that would put maybe a much bigger burden on those two new schools. A future board will probably have to look at possibly redistricting the schools to maybe, to maybe move students around. If that be the case, students would be on the, you might have kids who are on buses going from Frog Rock, Frog Rock Road over to Seven Bridges, which is the opposite ends of our district. So we, that could, that could cause us, the biggest thing I think we're looking at are the numbers, as you said, the revenues, the expenses, transportation, and the impact on our district. And I don't think that's all been fleshed out enough. I mean, they can, the town board will do whatever the town board wants to do, but I think they have to, if they want to look what's right for the town, they have to understand the impact to the school district and other groups that also use the town. Holly, I know you told me that you had been on.
Yes, I actually was listening to the session last night as well, and I do plan to listen to the next two sessions. I share a lot of the concerns about, at the full build-out, what that's going to do relative to the tax base versus the increased number of students we would be educating. And I don't see enough detail in the statement to really understand where the numbers and the estimates have been derived from. So in addition to those listening sessions, I, I think it would be good for us to hear more from the town, the planner. I forget her exact role, but her name was Sabrina, she was doing most of the,
Sabrina?
Yeah, the presentation last night.
Or somebody from the town board, can you contact us?
Yeah, no, just, I mean, someone who can really explain, you know, what assumptions went into those numbers and what expectations really would be. I, I have a lot of questions and concerns, but I just feel like right now, I need a lot more information.
Yes, I have not had a chance to listen yet, but the numbers seem very fictitious in terms of the number of residencies being proposed and the number of students who would reside in them, especially considering that the primary draw of this community is the school system. And I also think that in what Warren mentioned, with the projects already coming online, there's another one as well, which is all of the townhouses that are still due to be built at Chapakla Crossing, which I don't remember the exact number, but it's a lot. And if we assume that those will also have, you know, a comparable percentage with school-aged children, we're already looking at a lot, a lot of kids. And again, it's, it's the same catchment zone. You know, there have already been concerns that all of the projects currently slated are zoned, I think, for Bell. And the, you know, we don't know yet, and we're gonna see within a few years, I think, what, what that does in terms of population at both middle schools. But I think we're already potentially looking at issues of crowding at one versus the other and needing to address that. And if Warren's sort of, you know, conservative estimates on the number of kids who would be housed in that many apartments is, even within the ballpark of correct, that's another elementary school's worth of students being added. And I understand they wouldn't all be in the same grade, but just in terms of a conceptual number of students we're talking about. It's a lot, it's a lot of kids.
Well, you have the bridge across, you know, probably 13, 13 grades, but probably maybe more focused toward elementary. You know, I did say, I'm sorry.
No, I just, I just think that this is in addition to what we're looking at in terms of the townhouses. And we don't even know how many kids we're talking about with that yet, at this point.
And Hillary, that's also in addition to the, the city flight that even the town board talked about in the presentation last night, that it's, that it's real, people are coming out to the suburbs from the city. So we may already be looking at enrollment increases as, as people shift a little bit. So I, I know, Warren, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, it's okay. I mean, we don't have any direct input on what the town does. They will do whatever they're going to do. But I did say this, that, you know, as a board and as an administration, which Dr. Ackerman says all the time, that we're committed to educate all the children who live in our community. But we need some help determining how to do that from a financial point of view, from a tax point of view, from a numbers point of view, because if these numbers do go up, it's going to affect how we do that. And again, we will, we will, we will commit to educate all the children, but because basically, our job is we represent the children of the district as well as the parents, as well as the taxpayers who don't have children in the district.
Yeah, I definitely agree that all, all children of this district are definitely welcomed by us, and we want to educate all of them. I think this is a matter of information to the public because I'm very concerned with a short shrift given to school district considerations with this plan because the impact on the school district will impact the residents more than anything else because school district taxes is the highest proportion of taxes that we pay in local property taxes compared to taxes that go to the town. And so the residents of this community will be impacted the most by the way the school district is impacted by this plan. So I think that the impact on the district is something that is very important to be accurate about and to do a thorough analysis on. In order to determine, I, I know that the town is very concerned with return on investment, and that's how they're, they're going to determine how many stories to build up, et cetera. I mean, I don't know the details of how they'll make their determination. But in order to determine what that return on investment is, we have to understand how this is going to impact the people of this community and, and their taxes. And that has to be part of the conversation. Otherwise, there can't be any kind of informed decision-making on the matter.
I guess, I guess what concerned me most was when they said that the administration, the board consulted. I'm not sure, when we, I know Jane and Christine had been involved in some initial meetings, but to consult about numbers is totally a different thing. We didn't see those till yesterday, so.
No, there's been no meaningful consultation. There was just a meeting saying, "We're engaging in this environmental impact study, and we will meet with you." Again, the school district will meet with you when this, when this document comes out. And so that did not occur yet.
Vicki? So, yeah. I just wanted to add something about the return on investment. I think rather than the town making that decision, it's going to be the individual developers. And I think that's where one of my other concerns lies with, when this code is implemented, the decisions in terms of how many units and how much it really can be added is going to be left to a developer as long as it's compliant with this type of a code. So there, there's less individual discussion and consultation on individual projects. So having a good understanding of how we can integrate into our planning the potential impacts in the future is important to know now before the developers are able to start building within this new code.
Okay, so are you saying that the adoption of this plan diminishes the ability of the community to have input into the various developments that will take place? And that is the problem, that is the controversy?
That's what the Form-Based Code does, yes.
That's what it does, which is why I think Warren's point about the data is so important that like, if, if the project goes ahead, they should be making sure that the, the numbers that are coming out of this analysis are accurate. But, and obviously, they're not completely predictive.
Right, it's an assumption and not, right?
Right, there's no way to know completely or for certain. And obviously, by the time whatever would be built, would be built, things will change in so many different ways. But the number of, the guesstimate of the number of schoolchildren based on the number of residences feels very, very off. And I think that that's an important piece of information to really have a good guesstimate based on our community now versus just some sort of national, you know, algorithm. Because I don't, I don't think that who would move into a community is sort of a national algorithm kind of thing in terms of whether you'd have kids or not, or, you know, who's attracted to what community. I think that it has to be a specific look to get accurate data.
So I would share, you know, in general, I get really excited about efforts to develop the community, right? For the better. But I also know how complicated it is, particularly when you're talking about building housing and how that impacts us. I'd like to say that the process that we outlined with the town back in June is still being followed, from my understanding. And I think the term that's muddied what we're talking about is this concept of consulting and when that's supposed to happen and how that's supposed to happen. Because in our meeting with the town, and we had two meetings, to understand the scope of what they were analyzing. And then we all agreed that when the environmental impact study was completed, we would consult on what was shared. And that would be the appropriate time to give our input, not before. And I anticipated that that would come out in September, which it has, because it was sent to me yesterday. So I feel like there's two processes happening at the, at the same time, but the, the process that we outlined with the town is still, is still on schedule, where they would share with us the environmental impact study, and then we would set up a time to be consulted about what we read within that study and provide our feedback. I think we're, I don't want to say there's confusion. That's not the right term, but I think what has resulted in some confusion on my, on my end is what was discussed last, last night, which I was, I was not a part of, and what the term "consult" means in terms of defined by the town with regards to this project. Because we're still on point with our timeline.
Right.
Like, I guess the confusion came in when, I think it was just implied that the school district had weighed in. I know Holly and Warren, you could, you could let me know if that's correct, but I think the representation was that the school district had been consulted. And, and I think it was implied, and so there was confusion as a result.
And then the numbers.
Is that, is that accurate?
No, yeah, no one saw numbers until yesterday.
Right, I think we're, what our understanding was, us, right, the two meetings we had, is a process, understanding the process, and then when would be the appropriate time for us to give our feedback. And we all agreed that the appropriate time to give our feedback was after the environmental impact study was shared with us, which just happened yesterday.
But it was also shared with the community at the same time.
We didn't talk about that in terms of our conversation with the town. Who else would have information released regarding the environmental impact study? We just talked about our process in terms of giving feedback. So now, then the next layer of this, if we continue on schedule with the process that we outlined together with the town, would be an opportunity for us to provide feedback on that environmental impact study. So we would need to reach out to the, to town to talk about how that should happen and when that should happen, which I can certainly help facilitate.
Okay, but Christine, I just want to know, they have not reached out to you or to us? I have not received a call from anyone on the town board. And have you received any, any calls to schedule any kind of meeting to discuss the study?
Right, so I was on a, I was having a different conversation today where members of the, the town board were a part of, and we transitioned on a different issue.
Right.
And we transitioned into talking about this matter. And then we had discussed the need for us to provide feedback based on the process that we outlined back in June. And then I left it at that. So there needs to be follow-up regarding that conversation to help facilitate what that process would look like.
Okay. So I think just, I just want the community to understand that the school district has not weighed in, given any kind of meaningful input or feedback. I mean, whether meaningful or not, has not given input or feedback at all. We have not had the opportunity yet because we received the DE, the DG EIS only yesterday.
I guess, I guess my concern is because Holly, afterwards, is the fact that they have this meeting last night, they have a meeting next week and the following week. So I'm not sure what their timeline is because someone asked a question about, is it going to be a community referendum passed? And they were told, no, the town board, it's legislative, the town board will do it on their own, and they will pass or not pass it. So there's, we didn't see a timeline of when that was going to happen. And with only two more meetings, it didn't seem like we had a lot of time to weigh in.
And my understanding is what, what we have the opportunity to weigh in on is the code itself, that they're public hearing, rather than the analysis that they're using, which is actually what I'm concerned about is this study that's already been accepted that I don't think we have a good understanding or honestly, confidence that it accurately represents the potential impacts. And if I'm, if I'm understanding the process wrong, I apologize, but if the analysis is closed, I, I'm not sure what feedback on the code itself could, could benefit.
I think that's a good point, Holly. I had not really considered that the analysis could be closed without consultation with the school district, without understanding our budgeting calculations and impacts on, on enrollment, whether the enrollment is accurate and whether the analysis of the resulting costs to the district and tax rates to the taxpayer are actually accurate. So there may be a document there that, that's not at all accurate with respect to the school district because no one consulted with us as this was being developed.
So I, I knew that they've been working on this for, for a while, but I think these numbers have only been only been out there for a very short time. So I think we still need to digest everything and.
But it is, it is a draft environmental impact statement. It's not the final one. So I can't say I know exactly what that means. And if, it is subject to change regarding some of the analyses. But I guess all of these questions are questions to ask and to get answers to as we proceed.
I think we need a better understanding of, like you said, there is, it is sort of bifurcated. The form-based code, which allows development to take place a certain way, different than traditional zoning that we're all used to, and what analysis was, like what the basis of that analysis was as to how that might play out basically with the form-based code. That's what it's saying. So I think this is new for a lot of us in terms of traditional zoning practices and what the form-based code means. So I don't think we would have input on to what that analysis would be. That's the analysis of how it could play out. I think we just need a better understanding of what that analysis was based on and how accurate it is and whether it's really going to play out that way. So I think if we could schedule something with the town so we could understand it, and then perhaps raise some issues or concerns that we have with that analysis, that would be very helpful.
I think so too. So Christine, can you arrange for that to, to schedule something with the town?
Okay. I'll just consult with you, Vicki, on how to actually do that. There's different ways for us to move forward with a meeting of that nature. So I'll consult with you by Friday.
Okay. That'll be, that'll be fine. Okay. Does anyone have anything else to add before I turn it over to the superintendent's report?
No.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Christine.
Thanks, Vicki.
All right. So we'll have to move down in the audience.
Okay.
Okay. So I just wanted to provide a few brief comments, a few updates for the community before I introduce Alan to do our audit report tonight. So the first is a schedule update. So I had sent a notification out to our parents last week that our elementary program will continue at 100% instruction and our middle school will move to 100% attendance starting Monday, October 5. And then our high school will move to 50% attendance for our students in the morning and the other 50% of our students will attend in the afternoon. And in all three models, if parents choose, students could access remote instruction. At the elementary, middle level, if students are going to be fully remote, parents would need to simply let us know by Thursday the week before. And there's more fluidity right now at the high school level. But just, you know, with the understanding that we may need to make adjustments depending on what's happening within our community, also in terms of staffing patterns that we see emerge. So I'd like Tony just to give you a brief update on where we are with our staffing. And I just want to begin by thanking Tony. This has been a Herculean effort to be able to open up our middle level schools at 100%, capacity for our students that Tony has had to lead. So I want to thank him in advance as well as for addressing all the staffing issues that we've had to have due to childcare and medical leaves as a result of the pandemic. So thank you, Tony.
Thank you, Christine. So just a quick update. We've shared this slide in previous presentations, but as it relates to retirements and resignations, we have filled most of those positions. There's one outstanding position that we are down to a finalist. I'm hoping that we'll have that filled by our next meeting. That's a special education position here at the high school due to a retirement right before the school year began. Our workplace accommodations that are outlined there have been changed since our last presentation. Neither have our childcare leaves under the FFCRA federal provision. We did have a couple of teachers put in for a medical leave since our last meeting, but we have been working towards covering those teachers. Also, I just wanted to spotlight that since September 1st, we hired about 50 new substitute teachers, both in the capacity of building specific subs and our per diem subs, which is a significant number. And our amazing, my amazing colleagues, Christine and Adam, today facilitated a training session for our new subs. And the hiring of that was only possible because of our building level leaders who really made time to interview and screen candidates at all hours of the night and day. And so we are happy about that. And we're in the final stages of hiring a few more subs to help launch our 100% program at the middle schools next week.
Thank you, Tony. And then I just wanted to share with you, at our last meeting, we had accepted the generous donation from Kathy for, to support our Sustainability Research Center. And we were able to send out notification to the community regarding that, the gift that was earmarked for the foundation and then will be donated to the district on, on the foundation's behalf. And so on the agenda tonight, KDNG Architects have, were awarded the RFP to design the project. And they had done preliminary work for us over the course of the summer, since this is such a new facility for a public school to engage in construction around. And so just very briefly, I wanted to show the video for the community, for those of you who didn't realize, there was a video attachment to the press release that we shared. So you can have an understanding of the Sustainability Research Center that will be constructing at Horace Greeley High School. So you can just take a minute. You'll see that this area is in the middle of our courtyard, right outside of our steam building facility. And we'll be attached to our science laboratories. And that's where our head house will be. So in our facility, you'll see that we have multiple rooms so that we can have different climates throughout the greenhouse. So we can have students engage in different bio-climatic studies and plant science research in different types of climatic environments. And then as we proceed through the greenhouse, you'll see how it will connect to our science labs, which will serve as a staging center for our students and a classroom environment where a lot of the prep work will take place before students will enter into the greenhouse to conduct their research. And when we had gone and visited universities and worked with our consultant from Cornell, they emphasized the importance of having this instructional space available for our faculty and for our students to work within. We also anticipate using our outside as well as potentially leveraging our inside spaces and some false light equipment to continue some additional plant science research outside the facility and within our school, within our school buildings. So you just get an understanding of the type of design work that'll be taking place over the course of this school year as we move towards July with a hopeful date of construction start at the outset of the summer. I asked John if he could talk about the BOSI's agreement that's on the agenda tonight that allows us to continue our relationship with Summit Security. So John?
I'd just give a very quick update regarding item 5.9 in our agenda. This is to join the co-op bid with Eastern Suffolk BOSI's. This is for our security guards. And because we didn't go out to bid ourselves, so we piggybacked with the BOSI's bid. And this is for our Summit Security. And Summit recently was taken over by ALI. So for guards, we have a point four supervisor manager who manage all the guards. And then we have five full-time security guards at the five elementary and middle schools. And we also have five security guards at the high school. And also, right now, we have guards after school and also on weekends, just to make sure that only those teams that have permission to use the fields are using the fields and also to make sure everyone is abiding the social distancing.
Thank you, John. And our last slide around the agenda tonight is I asked Tony if he could talk about our presenter on superintendent's conference today that will be working with our staff. So Tony?
I just want to know if I'm going to get some music to go in the background because I was feeling that vibe. So Dolly Chug is going to be here virtually on November 3rd to work with our staff as part of her professional learning day. This is her book, The Person You Mean To Be. And Christine and I, with a group of colleagues, got a chance to hear Dolly speak at NYU recently. Her book focuses on this notion of being goodish. And really the focus is about bias and how bias is a disruptor to equity and to inclusivity and diversity. And so she takes that notion of unconscious bias and unpacks it in really powerful ways in the book. She talks about things like the bootstrap narrative. She talks about an analogy of headwinds and tailwinds and how that impacts certain groups of people based on their color of their skin or their gender. And so it's really an accessible text that introduces the concept of bias in a really relatable way. And she just happens to be an amazing speaker, really positive woman of color, who's a professor at NYU and also a published author. So we're excited to have her come work with our staff on November 3rd and help us in our work around social justice, equity and anti-racism. So I highly recommend the book.
Thank you, Tony. And now John and I would like to introduce Alan. So John, if you could come up and I'll start to prepare Alan's presentation.
And so this is the annual event. We have finished our financial statements for year ended 2020, June 30th, 2020. And so we have Alan Casse, who is a part of O'Connell-Davey to make a presentation.
So Alan, thank you.
Welcome. Good evening. As John and Christine had mentioned, I'm going to go over the results of the June 30th, 2020 audit. Basically, the preliminary field work is when we test the controls. It was run over a two-day period, June 1st and 2nd. We had the required audit committee meeting on May 20th. The actual field work occurred the week of July 27th. And then we had the follow-up required audit committee meeting, September 21st, where we went through a draft copy of the report in detail. And tonight I'm giving you a summary of those meetings. Tonight we'll go over some of the summary of communications, the summary of the financial statements, the management letter, the communication to those charged with governance, and we'll have some other comments. So contained within the summary of communications, there's a section on the auditor's responsibility. And we're required to form an opinion based on our audit, which we did. We issued an unmodified opinion, which is known as a clean opinion, the best opinion you could receive. We're required to obtain reasonable rather than absolute assurance. We conducted the audit with professional skepticism. And we did it in accordance with auditing standards generally accepted in the United States, known as US GAAS. During the audit, there were no material errors noted, no fraudulent financial reporting or misappropriation of assets. In addition, there were no instances of or suspicions of fraud or allegations of fraud. Some of the management's responsibilities are to establish and maintain effective internal controls, which they did. There were no material weaknesses noted. To comply with all the laws, regulations, grants and contracts, which they did because a compliance audit was performed on the federal age received during the year. The judgments and estimates made by management were deemed to be adequate. And there were no significant audit adjustments by the auditors. In addition, there were no disagreements with management. And the audit, there were no unresolved difficulties. Management did not consult any other accountants. And PKF O'Connell-Davey is independent with respect to the school district in accordance with all relevant professional standards. And as I mentioned, there were no irregularities or illegal acts. In the management letter, there were two comments. One had to do with outstanding checks. And basically in the management letter, you could potentially have three levels of comments. You could have material weaknesses, significant deficiencies or control deficiencies. These two items were the only two in the letter. They're control deficiencies. And basically it's information that the board and the finance office should be aware of to remedy these issues. All right. This is the general fund, which is the primary operating fund of the district. The schedule of revenues, expenditures and changes in fund balance, but budget maxwell. You have the revenues on the top portion of the page and going left to right. You have the original budget, the final budget, the actual results, and then the variance with the final budget. The state aid, you'll see that there was a negative variance of $252,000. Part of that resulted because the state withheld 20% of the last payments that the district was to receive for their excess cost aid and their BOSI's aid. And that adjustment amounted to approximately $180,000. The other, you have various items. You have your sales tax, which was up significantly from the prior year. And you have your interest income, which was also up significantly. So overall, the revenues on a budget of $122 million generated a positive variance of $382,000. On the expenditure side, you had a positive variance in total of $7.7 million. And that was spread throughout the general support, the $2.3 million, the instruction of $3 million, the pupil transportation of a million, and the employee benefits of a million. So overall, if you look at the third number up from the bottom, the net change in fund balance, and if you look at that bracketed $5,957,000, that number means that when you adopted this budget, you anticipated utilizing almost $6 million of your prior year fund balance. You appropriated about $3.8 million, but there were also some encumbrances in there. So you basically, to balance the budget, you anticipated using or losing $5.9 million. That number was adjusted slightly to $7.3 million, but the actual results in the third column came in at a positive net change of $805,000, thereby generating an overall positive budgetary variance of $8,112,000. And if you take the $805,000 and you add it to your fund balance at the beginning of the year, the $22,166, you ended the year with a total fund balance of almost $23 million. This is the general fund balance sheet, and I just presented the whole balance sheet. But I did want to focus on the fund balance section, which is towards the bottom. You'll see you have non-spendable fund balance, which are prepaid expenditures. Basically monies expended as of June 30th that relate to the 2021 year. So those monies are unaccountable. You have restricted, these are certain reserves that were established by the district. You have $2.8 million for tax sorcerers. The employee benefit accrued liability, which is for compensated absences, is $2.6 million. The employees' retirement system, you have $1.5 million. You've designated $1.6 million for future capital projects. And that basically will reduce your long-term borrowing and save you expenditures on the interest and issuance costs. And there were other reserves for $1.5 million. So all your reserves add up to about $10 million. And then in the assigned section, you have encumbrances, again, which are those purchase orders for $2.4 million. And at the end of this year, you've taken $3.5 million out of the total fund balance and used that to balance the 2021 budget. Then the unassigned fund balance is $5,635,000. That is 4.39%. Under normal conditions, non-COVID, the state education department limits the unassigned fund balance to 4%. But because there have been certain changes and certain variations in your expenditures and your revenues, they basically gave the school districts a pass for this year. So you had 4.39% and that's $5,635,000. So overall, the district had a very good year. Last year, that $804,000 was a negative $1,808,000. Last year, that $804,000 was a negative $1,817,000. So overall, you did much better than the prior year. Okay, in summary, again, we issued an unmodified opinion. There were no material weaknesses noted. The school district has a AAA's rating from Moody, which is the highest rating you could receive. The appropriated fund balance, as I said, is $3.5 million. Last year was $3.8 million. In addition, during the year, the school district issued refunding bonds, which is basically like refinancing your mortgage. You took existing bonds and you issued new bonds at a lower interest rate. As a result, the district is going to save over $2 million over the life of the new bond issue. And if there are any questions, I'd be happy to answer them.
Can you give us some of your thoughts on what the state budget's going to do to future our future books and how it's going to look? We don't know what's going to happen.
Well, there's no indication what the state budget is going to look like going forward. But we did receive an email from one of our school districts late this afternoon, and they did receive 100% of their BOSI's aid, where we thought they were only going to be receiving 80%. So if that is in fact true, it wasn't my client, and I didn't receive the email directly. But basically, they withheld 20% of your last payment for your BOSI's aid and your excess cost aid, which I said was combined $180,000. The school district received 100% of their BOSI's aid, which means that if one school district received it, I'm sure all the school districts within the state will be receiving it. And since we basically wrote off that 20% as of June 30th, 20, to be conservative, that money will flow into 2021. Okay? Now, if they restored the BOSI's aid, will they restore the excess cost aid? I don't know. There's no, everything is happening, you know, it's very fluid. Because the economy, as we all know, is really, it comes back, it goes away. You know, they have to put in more quarantines. So there's really no way of knowing what the economy is going to do and what the state budget's going to do at this point. I don't know if that answers your question, but it's all the information we have at this point.
Alan, I'd like to thank you for your analysis. And, oh, did it, Vicki, were you going to ask a question? Did you want to go right? Okay, yes. So thank you for your analysis and your feedback and your suggestions. It's always helpful. We enjoy our working relationship with you. So thank you very much. Right, so we're going to head back up to the front and continue the meeting. Okay, thank you to Alan, even though he has walked out. I want to also thank Warren for being our audit committee chair and to our business office, John, and all the administrators. Thank you for working on, you know, with our auditors on a very good audit.
Awesome. We need to have a special thank to Kathy Lynch, who has joined us this year.
Absolutely. Is Kathy in the audience? Thank you. I don't know if she's here, but she was. And thank you so much, Kathy Lynch, our new treffer. Very appreciative. So at this point, Warren, would you like to move up item 5.3 as audit committee chair? I'd be happy to do that, or we could take it with a consent agenda?
We can do that. I'd like to move that we accept item 5.3. The board accepts the external audit report for the year ending June 30th, 2020. I'll move that.
And also, there's item 5.2. Do you want to do 5.2 and 5.3?
Oh, do 5.2. I move that we resolve that the Board of Education accepts the recommendation of the Audit Committee to accept the updated risk assessment report covering state mandates for the year ending June 30th, 2021, and select capital projects and purchasing and payables as intensive review areas for the 2020-2021 school year. So those are internal audits.
I'll second 5.2 and 5.3. Okay. Any further discussion? No, all in favor?
Thank you to the community members who are on the Audit Committee, to John, to Kathy, and the fellow board members. I mean, we're all on this committee because it's very important that we understand what the financials of the district are. So thanks to Dean and Chris Gallenfeld, Dean Rock, and Alan Rosen for spending their time helping our district also.
Yes, absolutely. Okay, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Any committee reports? Jane, do you want to start with communications?
Yes, we did have our first communications committee meeting. There's nothing big, important access that we did discuss, how beneficial. And thank you to Christine and the district for really keeping the community updated on all COVID-related matters. We think that the whole COVID station on our website has been incredibly helpful, and we appreciate all the communication that has been pushed out, and I know will continue to be pushed out on our, directly to the community, and also indexed very nicely on our homepage. We're going to be continuing to talk about ways to best communicate with all the members of our community. And we now have a advisory committee that's going to be joining us, and we plan to set up a meeting with the several people that will be on that committee to join us sometime in October, beginning of November.
Okay, thank you.
Sure.
I know we have some policies on the agenda. Do you want to give a policy report or wait until the policy?
We'll approve it.
Okay, approval, okay. Facilities?
We don't have, we haven't had any meetings yet, but we would like to get a facilities committee meeting scheduled. And we also look forward to our first community advisory facilities committee meeting to be scheduled sometime soon.
Yes. And we have our new anti-racism committee. We thought of a, you'd see, a nice acronym, which is CARES, the Community Advisory, CARES, Committee on Anti-Racism Equity.
And social justice.
And the S is for social justice, so we skipped the J. So for our CARES committee, we have a first meeting on October 5th at around six, about 6 o'clock, I think, 6:00 or 6:30. So we will report back after that meeting. Anyone else have any other committee or liaison reports?
No.
Okay. So now we're at our public comment period. We welcome public comments. And in respect for each other's time, we ask that you limit your comments to three minutes. Of course, board members may be contacted via email or phone. And after the public comment period, board members may have a discussion among themselves regarding the comments presented. So anyone with a comment, please come up to the microphone and identify yourself by name. Okay, I don't see anyone coming up for public comment. We will move on to approvals and ratifications. So I would like to take item, I'll ask for motion for item 3.1, which is for the board to accept the minutes of the September 16th, 2020 board meeting. You have a motion and a second. I'll move 3.1.
I'll second.
Okay, any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, so item 3.2, we have policy 7003, which is District Buildings and Grounds, which would be the first reading. May I have a motion on item 3.2 to begin the discussion? A motion and a second?
I'll move item 3.2.
I'll second.
Okay. Warren, Hillary, or?
Christine.
Um, I definitely should talk about the appeals policy. So do you want me to talk about the pets policy?
The first one's building grounds.
I know. So would you like me to do that one as well?
Sure.
Okay. So we wanted to make an adjustment to the buildings and ground policy, particularly around pets, to expand language that would allow therapy animals to be a part of the school district community if approved by the superintendent. So the policy committee looked at different policies throughout our region in school districts that have therapy animals as a part of their program. And we developed guidelines that we thought would work best for us moving forward. So what we have proposed in the first reading is some language that would allow us to be in a place where I would be able to authorize a therapy animal to be used with our students across the district. So Warren or Hillary, did you want to add?
I mean, I think some of the concerns we had were, therapy animal's not a class pet. It's not, you know, a, it's somebody, emotional support animal or a service animal. I mean, service animals are approved by law. Someone needs service animals, one thing. Emotional support animals are animals or something else. But a therapy animal is trained, handled by the trainer. There's specific rules around a therapy animal and a therapy animal. And I think that's where we were looking at this, to make sure that we were, we could do what's right for the district, yet again, make sure that we have some structure in place that we don't turn into a zoo.
Right. And I think it's very important that the animal in question here that is approved is attached to a human who is responsible for said animal. And that this is not, you know, as Warren said, it's different from either an emotional support animal or a service animal, both of whom, which are attached to students or staff members in the district as well. But in the case of the therapy animal, the therapy animal's handler is responsible for that animal and making sure the animal complies with district policies as well.
Okay, I have, I guess it's just a minor question. So I noticed that the handler will submit proof of licensure. So the handler themselves is licensed to handle the therapy animal, but does the animal, which is most of the time a dog, is that animal also licensed? I know that there has to be.
I think it's the animal that's licensed, not the human.
Okay.
Maybe.
Because I see the therapy animal must have been individually trained, et cetera. The employee handler shall submit proof of licensure. So I wasn't sure if it was the person who is licensed, who gets licensed to handle the dog.
Maybe, Alan, can you answer that question?
Yeah. Go ahead, Alan.
Yeah, so it's actually both. The therapy team, so that the, let's just assume it's a dog. The dog and the handler are certified as a team. That means that the dog is not certified independent of the handler, nor can the handler use a different animal. So it's.
That's good, okay.
Yep.
Yeah, that's an even better control.
Yeah.
Because they come together.
Yeah.
Okay. So what we've done in the past, what's been our process is, we presented the first reading for the board's consideration, and then you would send comments to Warren, Hillary, and I, that we would review and an additional policy committee with the attorney and make adjustments before the second reading. So are we okay with using that process here for this particular policy?
Yes.
Yeah. Okay. Everyone okay with that?
Yeah.
Okay. All right. So that, and then maybe when we read policy 3.3 and 3.4, we can do that together because they're connected.
They do.
Is that okay?
Okay, yes. So may I have a motion to take items 3.3 and 3.4 together? I will move, I will make that, I'll move. May I have a second?
I'll second.
Okay. So now we can discuss both, both 3.3 and 3.4.
So Warren and Hillary, may I?
Yeah, go ahead.
All right. So what we wanted to do here is, it became a little muddy last year in terms of what the appeal process was for parents around school matters. And so what we did was, we looked at language that we found in two different policies that addressed appeals. And we decided that it would be best for us to have all of our appeal language in one policy. So 3.4, policy 5020, the adjustment to that, the Students' Bill of Rights, is we removed the grievance and appeal process from that policy. And then we took the spirit of what was in that language, and we redeveloped policy 3005, which is the actual appeal policy for the district, to reduce the confusion for parents. So.
So previously, they had to go to both sections to try and figure this out.
Right. And it just didn't.
No, the consolidation makes sense, it seems.
And it became confusing for parents, became confusing almost for administrators. And so we felt that, and it became confusing when attorneys were involved in the appeal processes. So we felt that if we had everything in one space, and we had one policy to go to, to speak with our families about when matters happened, it would be, it would be clear for everybody and transparent. So then what we did was, we talked about how people could go about appealing a decision or filing a grievance. And that's what this language is about in this particular policy. So as you read it, you'll see at the front end, the first part of that process is with the building principle. And then if the, if the parents primarily, but students, of course, could engage in this as well on their own behalf, did not find that the matter was resolved at the building level, how they would interact with the superintendent, and then how they would interact with the board, and a timeline that would be laid out in terms of response. And so we thought that this process, with the exception of certain matters involving students with disabilities, was a process that could, could be used for almost any other issue that was brought to the building level that could not be resolved. So again, I would suggest that if the board could read it, digest it, and then if there are any suggestions, if you could share those with Warren, Hillary, and I, so when we go back and speak with the attorney prior to the second reading and possible adoption, we could make any suggested adjustments.
So I just have a question.
Sure.
On the second paragraph, the new language, it says, "This policy does not apply to appeals of matters involving students with disabilities, except for appeals of student discipline matters under the Code of Conduct." Is that supposed to say "or" to appeals under the Code of Conduct?
No.
Or are you saying that the policy regarding students with disability, the policy does not apply, except that it does apply?
Do you mean with designation? Is that why?
Um.
Or services?
So there is a different process if parents don't agree with a CSE decision that, that parents need to follow, that is not outlined here. But if a student with a disability is being disciplined, and they want to appeal a suspension, they would follow this process here. So what we're trying to say, and maybe we need to work on this language more, is if you don't agree with the decision that the CSE has made, you can't follow this process. There's a different process. But if your child has a disability and they've been suspended, and you don't agree with that suspension, you can follow this process. And how does the Code of Conduct come in? Because I'm just wondering if the words "except for" should be changed to "or to." So what are the exceptions to appeals according to this policy? The one exception is students with disabilities. Is there a second exception? No. What we were trying to say is that if a student with disabilities is subject to discipline under the Code of Conduct, this governs not the policies concerning students with disabilities.
That's what I thought. So I thought the language is a little confusing, and it makes you wonder, because it's an exception to an exception, rather than just.
Right. Basically, this would cover any appeal other than the ones explicitly governed by a different appeals process, namely the appeals of special education, really provisions, determinations of provisions of services or programming.
Right. We may just need to spell that out a little bit more.
Maybe you should make that a separate sentence.
Okay.
Yeah, because it is.
Do you see what I mean? It is. Yeah. Does this appeals process apply only to the Code of Conduct discipline decisions? Or is it broader than that? It's broad. Because parents have a right, and so do students, to have all matters reviewed, right? So it's. Could be residency or. Could be residency or tuition or. So, or concerns with how a matter was handled with a particular member of the staff, or an issue regarding residency, or an issue regarding grade placement. Like, there's, there's all types of matters that, transportation, that could be, that there needs to be a process in place in case there's disagreement. However, the one we often see, most frequently, are appeals regarding discipline decisions. And so that's why we wanted to make this very clear moving forward. Can I make one comment, which will just save some emails going back and forth, which is, it's just language, it's not substance, which is the third paragraph when I had read through this. The superintendent shall respond with a written determination within 10 business days of, and that used to say his, so I'm glad that the pronoun was changed to there. But I would just suggest getting rid of the pronoun completely, just to say that it's a, it shall respond with a written determination within 10 business days of the superintendent's receipt of the written appeal. I'd also want to make it clear to show that it's got to be when the superintendent maybe receives that appeal, as opposed to like landing on a desk somewhere or something like that. So I just think that would solve maybe two issues.
Okay, and since we're going through, through that paragraph, I would say, second to last line, where there's a comma and the word "rather," I would start a new sentence there. Do you see where I'm? Yes, yeah, yeah. Okay. Great, thank you. Okay, thank you. So that will be the first reading, and we'll get back to the second reading at the next meeting. Right, okay. 4.1 Instructional. I present 4.1 Instructional as presented. Okay, may I have a motion and a second for 4.1 Instructional Recommendation? I move. I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation for 4.1.
I'll second that.
Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I recommend 4.2 Non-Instructional as presented. I will move item 4.2. May I have a second? I'll second. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, now we've arrived at the consent agenda. So the use of the consent agenda permits the board to make effective use of its time by adopting a single motion to cover relatively routine matters which are included. So any, any member of the board who wishes to discuss a particular piece of business individually may indicate that, and the item will be considered and voted on separately. So it's recommended that the Board of Education approve the following consent agenda. Would anyone like to remove one of the items for separate discussion?
Just that we already took 5.2 and 5.3.
Right. So I will ask for a motion to approve the consent agenda excluding items 5.2 and 5.3, which we've already approved. But it would include 5.1 through 5.10. May I have a motion and a second?
I'm in. Second.
Okay, any discussion, the consent agenda? No, I think we've had discussions. Christine presented all the notable items in the superintendent's presentation. So all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
And now, facilities. So I'd like a motion for item 6.1 to acknowledge change order.
I'll acknowledge the, I'll move to acknowledge the change order in 6.1.
Okay, may I have a second, please?
Second.
Okay, any discussion? Any questions? Let's see. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay, may I have a motion to approve item 7.1 to, I'm sorry, to acknowledge receipt of the Treasurer's Report for August 2020?
I move 7.1.
I will second 7.1. Any questions or comments?
No.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Okay. Notice of future meetings. Our next meeting will be Wednesday, October 14, at 7:30 PM here at the Horace Greeley High School Auditorium. And following that will be a meeting on Wednesday, October 28, again at 7:30 PM at the Horace Greeley High School Auditorium. May I have a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I move that we adjourn the meeting at 9:29 PM.
I'll second.
All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Meeting is hereby adjourned. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you.
Thank you.